Health Officer of the San Mateo County, directing all individuals living in the county to shelter in their place of residence. The governor has allowed local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconference and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body or state body to avoid public gatherings, and has suspended all contrary provisions of the Brown Act. This meeting will be via video conference only and can be switched and watched in real time on the Millbrae Community Television Cable Channel 27 or on www.mctv.tv. The public cannot come to the Millbrae Council Chambers to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. To maximize time for public comment, members of the public are encouraged to provide comments by joining the city council meeting via Zoom. For web, visit https://zoom.us/. Select "Join a Meeting" and enter the meeting ID number 83040325875 and the password is 061915. And password, okay. Whew, wait a minute. Um, that was the first one. And then you use the raise hand feature to request to speak. For dial-in comments, please dial Enter the meeting code, meeting ID 83040325879 and password 061919 to speak. All public comments this evening are subject to a three-minute time limit unless otherwise determined by the by Planning Chair. At this moment, I'd like to call the Millbrae Planning Commission to order Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. If we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, one God, indivisible, just as for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Quigg?
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Wong?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Joe?
Present.
Commissioner Feng?
Yes.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you very much. Um, there is an agenda review, item number three. Do I see any changes? Seeing none. Uh, we will move on to the minutes of 7:20, 2020. Can I have comments or motion to approve? Are there any comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Standards first. Second?
Second.
Jean-Joe has seconded the motion, so uh, the minutes of July 20th um, have been approved.
Uh, do we need a vote?
You need a vote. Okay. Uh, Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Is that your vote? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Feng?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
That's a pass five to zero. Thank you.
Uh, the next item is public communication. Uh, this is reserved for anyone that wishes to speak or comment on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Would I see somebody with their raise up for a public comment or would you see them?
I do not see any hands up at this time.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is number six, and that is the consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar this evening. Uh, the next item is public hearings, number seven. Number seven A is 985 Larkspur Drive. This is a design re-use permit to allow the demolition and construction of a two-story residence and setback exceptions to allow less than the minimum required second floor setbacks of a residence in a single-family residential R1 zoning address. This is a public hearing, and it is continued uh, from the March 18th, 2019 uh, public uh, Planning Commission hearing. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, uh, I will now uh, go ahead and share on the screen the presentation. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good evening, Chair Quigg, Planning Commissioners, applicants, and members of the public. My name is Sam Fielding. I'm the Senior Planner with Millbrae's Community Development Department, assigned to present the 985 Larkspur project. Tonight, we also have Ron Perner, the Project Architect, available by phone, and the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Patel, will be available to present the project and answer questions. I'd like to begin with a little bit about uh, the background of the project. Originally, the project uh, was heard at the regular Planning Commission meeting on March 18th, 2019. At that time, the project was for a design review permit to allow demolition and construction of a two-story residence setback and an FAR, area ratio exception to allow less than the minimum required second floor setbacks and more than the allowed-for area ratio of a single-family residence.
Just, Mr. Fielding, your slide is still on the first uh...
Oh, okay. Um, okay. Is that on the second slide now? Okay. So I have it on the screen. Alrighty. Uh, just go ahead and do that. Uh, so the, the second uh, so Commissioner supported the setback exception. However, the project was continued for the applicant to redesign the plans to reduce the mass FAR. The applicant has complied with the Planning Commissioner's request and has now reduced the FAR so that an FAR exception is no longer requested. The project before you now meets lot coverage and FAR requirements for the R1 single-family residential zone. Project is uh, again, the design review permit for this project is to allow the demolition and construction of the two-story residence and the setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second floor side setbacks of a residence of a single-family residential zoning district. The project site is located uh, on the south side of Larkspur Drive between Pinehurst Court, downhill to the east, and Crestview Drive to the west. The home is located in the central western portion of Millbrae on the south side of a steep west-east sloping street that connects downtown Millbrae to Skyline Boulevard and Interstate 280. The 8,708 square foot interior lot contains a single-family two-story residence, including a two-car attached garage. The lot is a single-family residential home, identifying the general plan as low-density residence. This is the location of the lot. On Larkspur Drive. These are the uh, existing uh, site photos of the property at 985 Larkspur and the adjacent residences. This is a photo from the rear of the existing home and from the sides. This is the rear deck. And the project location, the front view of the home. The existing residence consists of a two-story, single-family, three-bedroom, and two-bathroom home. There's an existing two-car garage and a second-story covered side porch and backyard deck. The proposed project will involve the demolition and construction of a new two-story, single-family residence with four bedrooms, four bathrooms, and a new ground-level backyard deck. Setback exceptions requested for the front, west, and east elevations to match the existing two-story exterior wall locations. Adjacent neighbors were sent plans by certified mail. The two adjacent neighbors on Larkspur had supported the original design on March 18th, 2019, uh, but they did not return the consultation forms for the revised design. Um, they were submitted the, the revised design uh, for comment, but, but did not return their forms. One consultation form was received from the owner at 1261 Sleepy Hollow, which did not support the project. They raised concerns about privacy to the back, their backyard and the rear of their house. Staff evaluated the 1261 Sleepy Hollow property owner's privacy concerns using the site visit and office resources. Based on the evaluation, staff found the proposed project would not affect 1261 Sleepy Hollow's backyard and house privacy based on the following findings. The subject property is located approximately over 355 feet away from the project site, and the subject property is also located approximately 160 feet in elevation below the project site. The existing mature tall trees located in the backyard of the subject property will naturally screen the subject, the property from the project site. This is a aerial view of the location of the proposed project, 985 Larkspur, and the approximate distance as the crow flies uh, from the rear of the deck to the location of the rear of the exterior home at 1261 Larkspur, it's approximately 355 feet. This is a elevation map showing the, the site of the 985 Larkspur project and then 1261 Sleepy Hollow, which is approximately 160 feet below the actual uh, site of the project. These are some aerial photos showing the distance. This is 985 Larkspur Drive, and then this is 1261 Sleepy Hollow. Um, you'll note the trees and the vegetation um, in the backyard. So this is another view uh, looking east. Again, a view of 985 Larkspur on the location of 1621 Sleepy Hollow, which is actually located sort of toward the northeast of the project site. Another photo, uh, 985 Larkspur Drive, 1261 Sleepy Hollow, the trees. This is the staff photo from the site visit. Um, you can see the 1261 uh, Sleepy Hollow home here. And then this is the location of 985 Larkspur Drive. Um, and these are the trees and the vegetation um, that partially shield the backyard and the rear of the home at 1265 Sleepy Hollow. Again, some other views. So, moving on, this is the site, uh, site survey of the 985 Larkspur. Give you an idea of the lot and the contours. Uh, this is the existing home. This is the existing ground floor. This is the existing deck that'll be removed at the rear of the home. This is the proposed first floor. You have a living room, study in the front, a bathroom, new bedroom, dining room and an open kitchen, and then a prayer room in the back. And this is the proposed first floor. This is the existing second floor plan. This is the proposed second floor. That includes the new bedrooms, master bedroom, closet, family room. And that this portion here is just roof over the first floor. This is the existing front elevation and the proposed front elevation. You'll note that the roof line will, will change um, from this this direction to the, the opposite east-west direction, with the slope toward the north and the south. The existing rear elevation and the proposed rear elevation. Uh, there's the new deck, uh, stairs going down to some terracing landscaped area. The existing east elevation and the proposed east elevation, showing the new windows. And the existing west elevation, proposed west elevation. And this is the proposed and the existing roof plan. The existing on the lower level here, and then on top here, this is the proposed roof plan. And this is an array of solar panels that will be added to the, the rear portion of the roof. The applicants are requesting a second floor setback uh, on both sides and the front of the home. The required setback is seven feet from the sides. This is represented by the dashed yellow line and 10 feet from the front. Um, the applicants would propose to extend the, have the exterior second floor walls have zero setbacks. And this is to match the existing design uh, of the homes along the street, and also to uh, allow for the, the bedrooms and the stairway to the, the first floor from the second floor. And this is the material board, the color scheme. Uh, looking at a natural oak door. Uh, exterior stucco. That's uh, sort of a light cream. And the wooden gate will be this uh, sort of orange color. The trim will be uh, sort of a beige. And this is the type of roof shingles that have been selected. This is a rendering of the proposed project. Looking from the front, sort of to the southwest. The proposed project meets the required findings for the design review permit, findings A through D, and it also meets the setback exception findings, one and two of the Millbrae Municipal Code. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting an attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow the demolition construction of a residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second floor setback for the residents in the single-family residential R1 zoning at 985 Larkspur Drive, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes the presentation. And we have uh, Ron Perner, the architect, and also the property owners uh, that are available to answer questions. And staff is available to answer questions.
Do we have uh, currently, do we have any questions of staff? Seeing none, um, is the applicant available? Or the architect?
Yeah, they, they are available. Um,
They have to come in differently or?
They are the, they are uh, listed as a panelist, so
Oh, is that?
Ronald Perner is the architect.
Okay.
Um, he is, I believe, is only going to be on conference calls, so you'll just be able to hear him speaking. Uh, but he uh, can raise his hand or, you know, uh, Bernadette can let him in.
Okay, so um, should we hear from the architect first or the applicant? Why don't we go ahead and hear from um, Ronald? Bernadette, can you let them in?
They're, they're in already, Chair. They just need to unmute themselves and speak.
Okay, Ronald, you need to unmute yourself and then you can start speaking.
He might not be there.
Uh, Mr. Patel, are you there?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay, perfect. Can you please um, describe your project and speak on the project?
Um, so it's pretty much what Sam said. Um, you know, that was, you know, it's been, it's been about a year since we uh, were trying to get the project approved. Um, the details were uh, you know, said by Mr. Fielding here, and you know, there's nothing really else we'd like to add to it. Yeah, we just, you know, we, you got, we took the, you guys' recommendations into consideration and did it, and, you know, we just, we're just trying to finish it for our, you know, for our grand, my grandfather and my, you know, so that's what we're just trying to get done here, pretty much. But Mr. Fielding said it all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have any questions for the Patels? Seeing none, um, is Ronald available?
Yeah, he's on. I see that he's on, but it seems that he hasn't unmuted himself. Let me, let, let me try giving him a call. Maybe he doesn't know how to unmute it, but let me try doing that. Give me one minute, okay?
Oh, he just unmuted.
Okay, there we go.
Ronald? Can you please speak up? Can you give him a call?
Yeah, but I'm not sure if he's on his computer or on his phone, so we'll, we'll try calling him. Let's see what happens.
Okay, yeah, I believe he's on the phone.
Yeah. It's not working on, okay, so you unmuted it, right?
I, 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 I don't have a speaker on my uh...
Oh, right. Yeah, he doesn't have a speaker on his computer.
Okay. Can you, let me see if I can make this work. So, can you guys hear him if he's on the phone here with us?
Yeah, we can hear him.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, um, it, it, it's a, I think we want to comply with all the requirements that uh, have been presented, and I think uh, our floor area ratio is uh, below what is maximum. So, we think that we're complying with all your regulations.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the architect? From the commissioners? There being none, thank you very much. I will open it up to see if we have any comments uh, from the audience um, that have either called in or um, uh, emails. Uh, Bernadette, any emails on this project?
We don't, we're using the hands up and not the emails at this time. We've converted over, and I do not see anybody raising their hands to comment. Whether it be from the, the public or uh, within our...
Right. I see three more people have been added.
That's for the next presentation.
For the next presentation. Thank you very much. Uh, that being said, um, there is um, no rebuttal needed. Um, the public comment is closed. And can I um, have some discussion from the commissioners? Is there any discussion from the commissioners?
I have a question, a bit late, maybe for Sam again on the presentation. Uh, on one of the drawings right before the rendering uh, of the proposed drawing, uh, there was a drawing of the front of the house, and it appeared to have a front door. Um, but in the rest of the drawings in my review, it doesn't appear that there's a front door in front of the house. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can share the if you'd like, I could share the uh, the presentation again.
I apologize. That's a little bit late.
That's fine. Are you seeing it now?
Yes.
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 Maybe that's not the right one.
Which, uh, so the, on the plans?
Uh, for the front of the house?
Okay. So the front doesn't have, the, the, there's a gate, the entrance is from the side.
Mm-hmm.
So the proposed project will have the, the entry uh, from the gate, the entry gate on the left side, and that's where the, the entrance is.
Can you scroll forward to so um, so this rendering shows that, the drawing shows that there's some trees in front of the middle of the house uh, right there, and then...
No, this is the rear. The, these are plants.
The other one, no, the other one, on the front of the house.
Okay, right.
Okay, and if you scroll forward to the rendering or a little...
To the rendering?
Forward, maybe not the rendering, but right there. This one, the one back.
This one.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go back to the drawing right before that. So this one, I guess this is the existing, right? Or, because this one shows that there's a front door in front of the house.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah.
So I'm confused if there's a front door or not a front door.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. Um, I, I'd like to maybe get clarification from the architect on that. Because the they're showing the um, the entrance on the, from the side.
Right, and then also my comment is that with this side setback with the gate, there's only a five-foot setback, so that gate might be very narrow, and if there's the only an entrance on the side of the house, uh, it'd be very difficult to move in furniture or belongings just through that one little gate, although there is probably access to the garage also, but it's just a question or comment interest, find interest of, might suggest some clarification.
I'm sorry, Ronald, are you uh, available to answer that question?
The door, uh, we had the door or, or originally on the side, but we had a door in the front as well, but uh, because of religious reasons, uh, this here, uh, uh, says that the entrance should be next to the prayer room in the back. And, and that's why uh, it was changed from the 2019 drawing and uh, eliminated the door in the front, and we have the entrance to the side.
Okay, so can I, can I just um, say something real quick? So the house currently that it's, you know, that uh, the current rendering right now of the house that it is right now are the door is currently on the right side of the house. So this would just be on the left side of the house. So it's, so that's the only difference is, right now, um, if you look at the house, um, it's existing is on the right side of the house. If, nothing's in the front. There is no door in the front of the house. Um, and none of the houses on that street. It's all through the side, so currently, it's on the right-hand side, so it's just going to be moved. So right there, if you see it, those little steps on the side of the house, you'd, you'd climb up those steps, and then uh, on the side of the house is the entrance. That's where the current entrance is. So what we're trying, what we want to do is just make it through, accessible through the left-hand side, only because it's handicap, like handicap safety, and you can, it's easier to kind of get through there. So it's just a matter of changing the side of the house, I guess, the door from one side to the other side of the house, if that makes sense.
So is this the, is this the applicant, Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Yes, hi, Mr. uh, Ms. Patel. This is Commissioner Feng. I just wanted to get some clarification on where the front entrance is, because the rendering shows something else, and then this photo shows the house in its existing condition, having the entrance on the right-hand side of the property, which is really, you know, sort of at the south side of the property, right? Um, and then your proposal is turning, not only the front entrance is to the north side of the house, but it's also on the ground floor entrance.
Yes, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is just making it easier and it's on the ground. Yes, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is just making it easier and it's on the ground than it's on the top floor. It's just easier for our grand, like, we have grandparents and, you know, it's just easier for us to have wheelchair accessibility and in case of an emergency, it's just easier for, you know, in and out of the house on the ground floor versus being on, you know, the second floor of the house, because currently the entrance is opening to the second floor of the house.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
You are totally changing the entrance from where it is now to the side. Is that correct? You are eliminating the one.
Yeah, so we're eliminating the one where it's on the right side of the house. You see the steps?
Right, right, right.
Other side of the house, which is on the ground floor, the main.
So I'm sure it would not be difficult to, for you to change the one page that's a little discrepancy. And I think what you did is you might have used this, it might have been an older one because it's the one that's got the color renderings on, the colors on it. So I think that that should be changed.
Chair Quigg, are you referring to the rendering that they submit that shows the frontage of the property?
The one that shows the colors. It's, I, it was actually.
That was the material board, yep.
Material board.
Yes, that, that was the material, the materials didn't change, so the material board is just showing the exterior materials. But you are correct, it, it has, it has the
The two, the door.
Front elevation, that was the previous one, but the materials are still the same.
Okay, so in our documentation, because it was brought up and because of the fact that it is in this packet, we just make notations that this is the material board only and it is not what the existing or the new front of the house is going to be.
Yes.
The material, so what we can do is, I guess, I mean, just eliminate that door. I mean, we don't need to have that there, you know? Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why that's there, but.
Yeah, I, I think it being there probably made some confusion. On this page, I personally only looked at the colors as, and the material. And I didn't pay that much attention with the two doors, so staff can make sure that this is corrected.
Yes.
The packet.
Staff will, will make sure that the, the door is correctly represented on the plans.
Yeah.
And it is, it looks like on the plans it is depicted correctly. It's that, that it's incorrect on the material board.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe you just need to make a new material board.
That's no problem.
Okay, so if I might, another discrepancy I see is that for this drawing that's shown right here, it has a five foot on the east side of the property where we have the gate and the walkway to the entryway. Then there's a five foot width of the sidewalk, but then there's also the six foot ten to the lot line, six foot ten. On the documents that staff put together for the design review permit on the table for zoning compliance, then it states that there's a five foot east setback, but that's, I believe that's incorrect.
Actually, east and west, right, Commissioner Wong?
Right, so it should be actually six foot ten on each side.
That's really the question for the applicant as well as the architect, is that when I read the plan, I'm, you know, grossly confused as well. And quite personally, I read many plans on a daily basis, but it shows that the exterior wall is supposed to be six foot ten away from the property line on both the south and the north side of the proposed structure. And yet the staff report shows five foot setbacks, so I'm just trying to get a clarification as to which one is it, which one is it?
I, I think that the two sides are east and west.
The two, according to the plan, is north and south. Unless the plan is wrong in terms of its bearing.
I don't know, I come down the hill and, and the freeway runs north and south.
Well, I'm, well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the Plan A dot one.
Well, this drawing right here has a north arrow, so it shows sides has been.
Yeah, it's got a north, it's got a north, north arrow and it shows, you know.
Might be a mistake too.
Yeah, right, you see that, right? You see that, that arrow right there? And let's, let's ask the architect. Is the architect online?
Ronald?
Mr. Perner?
Okay, I am online.
Okay, great. Did you get, did you get my question, Mr. Perner?
Where the building is at the present time. We do not move the walls. The walls are in the exact same location.
So then the measurements might be off.
Well, so, so Mr. Perner, if I may ask that question a little bit more precisely. The proposed exterior wall of the property, is it six foot ten away from the property line or is it five foot away from the property line? Which one is it?
And we're not moving it.
Mr. Perner, we have a hard time hearing you?
They're not moving it. They're not moving it.
Um, can you, can you hear me? Okay, he's on the phone, so it might be more difficult for you to hear him. He's saying that he's not moving any walls and it's exactly what it was. It's six foot ten is what he's saying.
Okay, so he is not changing the location of the exterior wall, which means it remains at six foot ten?
Yes, yes.
On both south and north side of your exterior wall, basically the side wall, the two side walls.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, so staff can make the corrections on the staff report. They'll change the elevations to north and south. And we will actually change the, make sure that the proposed is, reads as six, six inches of a north and south elevation. And we'll change the staff report so that it's north and south.
I believe the discrepancy might be on the second floor with the bay windows, right, on the drawing.
Yeah, there is a bay window on the second floor, but another question is, when I'm looking at the, sorry, Commissioner Wong, I'm sorry. If I just may steal the 10 seconds of your time, if I may, Commissioner Quigg, Chair Quigg?
Yes, I.
I'm sorry, so it's for the applicant and the, and the architect. On the rendering that I'm looking at, you know, with a Mercedes in the front, I see a sizable overhang that is projecting from the side wall, which is the north side of your property. Of, I should say, the structure. Is that what you intend to do with this sizable overhang? Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Which elevation are you, are you talking about?
I'm looking at this rendering, excuse me.
Oh, the rendering, okay.
You see this big overhang? There you go. You see this big overhang on the left-hand side? Do we intend to, do we have, do we intend to have that overhang? Because that overhang seems to be a lot closer than five feet from the property line.
I mean, it's just probably a cover-up rain, take out the trash without getting grunged, you know, I don't know, it's not. It's, you know, it's mainly just to, just for if we do take wheelchairs in and out and for weather purposes, that's just there. We're not moving anything, there's no, you know, changes in a wall placements, anything like that. It's exactly what it was, you know. It's just, it's just a canopy overhang.
Canopy overhang. Does it, does it used to be that way, Ms. Patel, or is it new?
No, no, that's just added there.
That's new.
So what it was, and if you look at our, our current house, it's like that, you know, we have a little deck slash canopy in front of the door, so it's just kind of similar to that, pretty much. So it's just, what it is, it's just, what was on the right side is on the left side now, but it's not even as much as what it, what it was on the current house. You know what I'm saying? It's like a deck outside of, it's like a porch, it's not even a deck, it's like a porch. A canopy, I don't know how to explain it.
It's an overhang.
Yeah, it's just, just a canopy overhang, just so, you know, when it comes inside, there's, just if it's raining or anything like that, just to protect chair heads and furniture if we move.
I understand your intent of the overhang, ma'am. And I, my question is, how far the overhang sticks out? Because it's not, it's not clear to me on the plan what, how much it sticks out.
Ron, do you have the answer to that?
Uh, I don't, but it comes very close to the property line. It's a rear deck and it projects out at least, as far as I've got the roof now, it, it projects out at least five feet.
I'm sorry, I can't hear that, Mr. Perner. You said project out how many feet?
I think he said, what did you say it was, Ron?
I would say that the existing deck does project five feet out above the wall, yes.
Five foot, six inches. Am I hearing you right, Ron? Five feet?
Yes.
Okay, Sam?
Yeah.
Do we have, what's the regulation on planning code as far as overhang goes?
So our technical features, corners, aziz, canopies, bay windows may extend no closer than three feet to any interior side lot line. And not more than two feet from any required front, rear, so they could extend three, uh, three feet into the sideline.
It cannot extend beyond three feet from the side lot?
Right, from the side, according to our code.
But what about, but what about from the property line? Don't we have a limitation as to how close it can get to the property line?
It can be no more, so, so the no, the limitation is extending three feet into the side, into the, into any interior side lot line, so. Let's see.
If it's the concern of it five feet, we can make it to three, three feet. That's, that's perfectly fine.
We'll, we'll let you know in a second, Ms. Patel. Just give us a second here.
It's, yeah, it may extend no closer than three feet to any interior side lot line.
Interior side lot line, not the side wall.
Lot line, so, so that means it, it can extend two feet.
Uh, actually, so their, their side wall is six foot ten inches, six foot nine inches, give or take, right, from the property line. So if the overhang cannot be closer than three feet from the property line, so that means they could extend out as much as three foot nine inches?
Yes.
Is that, is that what the calculation should look like? Ms. Patel, you get that?
Yes.
Okay, so you can extend out, the, the overhang that you intend to extend it out cannot be closer than three foot from the property line?
All right.
Okay. Yeah.
Are there any?
Yeah, I see, I see that the drawing eight point two has the dimensions of that overhang, so it's called out there. It just needs to modify that. It's good to make all these clarifications and make it, your design's really bulletproof, so when you hire the contractor, you don't have any discrepancies and build it the wrong way or say, oh, we, we didn't know that and we have to charge you more money. So it's good to make all these corrections and have it as cleaned up as possible.
Are there any other questions of staff, the applicant? I have a, a little comment to make. I think it looks very nice and I do appreciate what you have done. My only little thing is looking at the rendering, I'd like some plants. You see where the little pink plants are now? I think it looks very nice, but I'd like to see something on the, closer to the wall because it looks like, it looks a little bare right there. And, and I think that could be easily done when you do your planting there.
No problem, we will.
It's just kind of, I'm looking at it, it looks a little bare.
My grandma loves, you know, plants.
Yeah, just a shrub or something, some greenery or something.
All right.
Are there any other questions? Otherwise, we are on commission discussion. Do we have a motion? Oh, now I can see everybody. Great, I don't know how that happened. Um, so now I see everybody. Do we have a motion to approve or are we still have some discussion on this?
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, please.
This is Jean. Yeah, so I just wanted to add in my comments as well, because I know this was last time we had asked for a lot of the reduction in the massing and I, I think it looks great. I'm appreciative of the applicants for your patience in redesigning this and hope that it'll work out well for your grandfather as well, especially. So having said that, if there's nobody else, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, so I will go ahead to make a motion for 985 Larksworth Drive to allow, for the design review permit to allow the demolition and construction of a two-story residence and the setback exceptions to allow less than the minimum required second floor setbacks for the residence, for this residence in the single-family zone as per the conditions, staff findings, findings and conditions in the staff report.
If I may just add a little bit, you know, with the modification of the overhang?
With the modification of the overhang.
Okay, I'll second that.
And.
Is, is there a, an amendment to the conditions regarding the landscaping?
If we want to put that in to that, add a couple of plants right on the front of the side on the west side. I think she understood what I meant. I feel very comfortable that it will happen.
Yeah, I don't think we need to put in, I mean, they would want it to look pretty, so I, I, I don't think we need to add it in, so I will.
I think they heard me and I feel very comfortable that they're going to do it. So we have a first and a second, and can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quigg?
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Fong?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jill?
Yes.
That's a five to zero with a pass with the modification to the overhang.
Yay.
Good luck, Patel family.
Congratulations.
There is a 10-day appeal process, so you have to wait up for the 10 days before you oh dear, excuse me, okay.
And how will we, how would we find out if somebody does appeal it, they're?
They'll be, you can check with staff, but staff would notify you if there was an appeal. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, you guys have been wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam, for presenting.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank all of you.
Okay, the next item is public hearing also and it's item seven B and that's for 832 Hawthorne Way. This is a design review permit to the allow the demolition of an existing single-story residence and construction of a new single-story family residence in a single-family zone. Can we please have the staff report?
Well, yes, thank you. Chair Quigg, I'm just sharing my screen here real quick. Good evening, planning commissioners. The project for you tonight is for a design review permit at 832 Hawthorne Way. The applicant is requesting a design review permit to allow for the demolition of an existing single-story residence. Um, the applicant is requesting a design review permit to allow for the demolition of an existing single-story residence, um, and the construction of a new single-story, single-family residence, the R one zone. Um, real quick, here's the location. It's in the Mill Estate. The red dot here shows the location of the, of the project. It's in those Mills Estate neighborhood. A bit of background information, um, it's zoned in the R one zone, uh, residential single-family zone. It's an eight, eight thousand four hundred square foot interior lot. Um, the existing home, it's a single story, and it's two thousand two hundred and eleven square feet. Um, that's being proposed to be demolished. Um, the proposal is then to build a new single-story, three thousand eight hundred and eighty-one square foot home. Um, here's, this picture is of the existing home. Um, and here's just the image that shows the existing home again, and then the, the proposed, a rendering of the proposed on the right. Um, and here's the existing site plan over here. Um, I'm not sure how well you can see that. For me, the, the little screens are kind of getting a little bit in the way. Um, but basically the existing residence is there, and then they have a detached garage here in the back, in the rear. That's being proposed to be demolished as well. Then we have this, um, this is the proposed site plan. Um, excuse me, it meets all the setbacks on both of the sides. It has a five-foot setback on the front. Um, it beats the setback, the twenty-foot setback. It's at twenty-four feet and seven inches. Um, and then in the rear, it includes a deck, um, but it also meets the rear setback. And they do demolish the garage that's located here in the rear currently, um, and then they move it to, to the, as an attached garage to the main residence itself. Um, this is the existing floor plan. They have, uh, two bedrooms with a master suite, um, two bathrooms, and then a living room, family room, a kitchen, and a dining room. Then this is the proposed floor plan. Um, it increases the bedrooms to four bedrooms with a master suite, um, and then four bathrooms as well. Uh, again, it includes a family room, a dining room, a kitchen. Um, the garage, again, is now attached rather than detached. It includes an office and this attached, uh, deck in the rear here as well. Um, this is the existing house. This is the existing front elevation. It measures at, um, just over, or just under nineteen feet in height. Um, this is the rear elevation, again, just under nineteen feet. Existing right side elevation and the existing left side elevation. Uh, then here's the proposed, uh, front elevation, a more modern look. Um, it includes a, a, uh, the materials that are being used, it's accommodation of stucco, uh, cedar siding, uh, metal fascia, and then a bit of aluminum, um, for the windows and a, a mix of aluminum and glass for the, uh, for the garage core over here. Um, and the height of it actually decreases, decreases a little bit, uh, down to, uh, just over, for, uh, over fourteen feet. Um, here's the rear elevation. Again, the same materials of cedar siding, um, stucco, and then the metal fascia as well. Um, here's the right side elevation. And then the, uh, left side elevation. Um, in order to grant a design review permit, um, the planning commission would need to find that it meets, um, the required findings, um, under the city code. Um, staff finds that all four findings here, you see two of them. Um, the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure, grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, two, the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Uh, three, the project will not, will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views. And four, that the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city. Um, staff finds that all four of these findings are met through the, through the, uh, proposal, as, um, detailed in the staff report. Um, there were some, there were some neighborhood concerns that were, uh, brought up. Uh, specifically, one of the adjacent neighbors spoke, um, with staff regarding safety, uh, garage and kitchen locations, the architectural style, and, uh, some construction concerns. Uh, staff assured the, the applicants that, um, the building department would, would ensure that, that all safety and building code regulations are met. Um, regular inspections would, would be a part of, of the construction process. Uh, the proposal does meet all the setbacks and other development standards, um, and staff does, does approve of the, of the proposed design for the house. Um, with all that said, staff recommends that the planning commission considers adopting a resolution, approving the design review permit to allow for the demolition of the existing single-story residence and the construction of a new single-story residence at eight three two Hawthorne Way, uh, subject to the, um, conditions of approval that are attached in your, and your, um, staff or of your planning commission packet. Um, staff is available for questions. I believe the applicants are, are to say, as well as the homeowners are, are available here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have any questions of staff at this moment? Let me see if I can.
I have a question for Roscoe, if I might. Uh, on the staff recommendations, one of the last bullet points was that, uh, the staff finds this, uh, design in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, could you elaborate on that? This is a very, uh, uh, modern design. It's very contemporary, uh, really nice, um, architecture. However, how would you say this fits in with the character of the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, um, with that finding, um, I don't think that it's really the intent of the code to, um, to, to limit the designs of proposed buildings to exactly, um, the, the style of homes that are on the street, rather to give some flexibility and to give some, um, variability to the existing, um, streetscape. So making that finding, um, the character of the neighborhood, uh, is this house going to be, um, a larger, much bulkier, massive than the existing homes? Does it have the same amount of articulation? Does it have, um, is the scale of the building similar or, um, compatible with the neighborhood? Are there sort of things that the commission should look for and in staff view? Um, given the low height of the building and, uh, the quality of materials, we can support those findings?
Also a, a question. I noticed that, uh, with these two designs that we're looking at tonight, uh, the, uh, number of bedrooms and the number of bathrooms increased substantially, and the east of the bedrooms, uh, has its own full bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Was somebody talking?
Yes.
Talking, weren't you?
Yes, can you hear me?
No, there was a little piece in there that was vague, very quiet.
Yeah, I'll try to speak louder. So, uh, both of these designs that we're looking at tonight, they both increase the size of the homes substantially with the number of bedrooms and the number of bathrooms, and the number of bathrooms. And it's a full bathroom. Five-bedroom, four-bath home. Uh, I'm just curious about any design, um, for impact fees on the number of bathrooms. I know that, uh, there's a lot of concerns in Millbrae about water usage and about our, uh, sewer systems and the load it takes and the fees that are incurred by the residents, that's substantial. So, you know, if we were to allow several homes of this size with, um, you know, a number of bathrooms for each room, uh, is there offsets or fees associated with allowing that number of, uh, bathrooms?
I'm sure this question is for Roscoe Montal.
Yeah, we can, um, look into that. I don't know off the top of my head. Um, those are building department fees, um, charged during the, uh, building permit issuance. Um, you can look into that and, and report back to the commission.
Right, maybe just something for future consideration, because if, uh, you know, there's always this concern about, um, overloading our, uh, sewer system and its capacity, which I've heard people say, uh, from city, other city planning meetings or city meetings. Just, uh, wondering if every house has four bathrooms, how will that impact our infrastructure? Uh, but, uh, maybe that's for another discussion.
Yes, I agree. Are there any other, at this point, we're just commenting on the presentation. Does anyone else have anything to say, um, about the presentation or any questions on the presentation? Now I'm seeing you all. I don't see anyone that wants to speak. Uh, is the applicant or the architect available? Um, Bernadette is, I see Anna, Alex, and Audrey. Uh, is there one of them that are going to be speaking on the project?
Yes, sir, can you answer that, please?
I believe Audrey, Audrey says the, uh, architects for the, for the project.
Oh, okay. Um, Audrey, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. Um, I am the architect for the project and representing my clients, Zach and Anna Wong, and, um, they have a large family moving from another city near and nearby in the Bay Area, and they're looking to settle in this part of the Bay past the fog belt. And what attracted them to this property was the flat, um, grading of the lot, the large size of the lot. Um, the ability for them to be able to use a nice-sized backyard with their family, and especially these days during COVID, we all enjoy our backyards more and more. That is actually the reason for, um, taking down the detached garage and attaching it to the home to enlarge the backyard. Um, in studying the, the neighborhood patterns, there are a number of homes, um, scattered throughout the neighborhood with attached garages, and, um, felt that it was befitting to, um, approach their house design, um, with the attached garage. So they do have, um, a five-bedroom, four-bath home that we're proposing to basically suit the needs of their, uh, large and growing family, room for each child, um, a guest room, um, for in-laws and parents, um, to visit. And, um, and really trying to, originally, they wanted to have a bathroom for each child. And as we developed the plans, we decided to, um, have a couple of kids share bathroom to, and to keep the bathroom count down. And, um, it could have been a three and a half bath, um, home, but we thought that for the guest room, it would be nice to have a full bath for the guests, for the guests to be able to use, and that's how we ended up with the fourth bathroom. Um, as, um, Nestor, um, shared, we have, um, expanded upon the one-story home, uh, but have lowered the massing of the house currently. We've lowered the house by approximately four feet. And we are well within the floor area ratio limitations. We've met all the setback requirements and are asking for no variances. So we hope to get your support this evening for, um, our designed project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is Alex, is going to be speaking this evening right now, or Anna?
Anna is my client, and she's just here in attendance to address any questions specific to the homeowner, if applicable.
Perfect, and Alex?
Uh, I'm the labor. I'm not, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm not as a applicant.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to get the other pieces together.
Okay, thank you, no problem.
Uh, so the presentation has been made by the applicant. Uh, now we will open it for public comment, and, um, Alex, this is the time that you can speak.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll, uh, thank you for all the commissioners this, uh, tonight, uh, for like reviewing the, take the time reviewing this so late. So I'm, I'm against this, uh, work and in the way that the demolition of this, uh, existing house structure will push the, the whole house much closer to our existing house. And, uh, and also the plan also pushes the new house much closer to the street because the whole area needed greatly expanded. And, uh, the, the garage is very close to our kitchen. And I, I'm, I'm unclear in the drawing because the four big pine trees are all not there. I don't know what's going to happen to the four big pine trees between our two houses. And, uh, also the, I'm a little, uh, unsure about the, the rest of the windows above the first floor, because I'm not so sure, because in the original house, there's no rest of the windows. And the last one is, uh, because of the, of the expanded, uh, whole house, the backyard is becoming much, much smaller versus the old house. And the, the logic, a lot, a lot later issue about this is like the application said, right now is the COVID time. So all the schools are closed, all the students are distance learning at home. So introduced like such kind of like demolition and the building for the whole house is really just to make everyone uncomfortable inside the house, because all the parents or the kids has to stay at home all day. I just like, the, I mean, the older zoning rule does not take into account, but I, I hope like the, the approval process, we are taking into account of this kind of things. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, does?
Through the chair, please. I'm sorry, through the chair?
Yes.
This is Bernadette. Uh, Alex, can you state your last name and your address, please?
Uh, my last name is Lee, and, uh, my address, eight three six Hawthorne Way.
Eight three six, thank you.
That's all. Is there someone else that needs to speak?
Um, that, no one has raised their hands otherwise at this time, Chair.
Okay, no one that I can see?
I cannot see anybody that has raised their hand otherwise to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, just a moment. Somebody just did.
I'm not seeing it.
Hold on, just.
Oh, I see it.
There is a new person that would like to speak.
Okay. Um, S. Deng, would you like to speak right now? You have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me clearly, clearly?
Yes, can you state your full name and your address, please?
Uh, my first name is Stephanie, uh, last name is Dan, and I'm also from the, uh, eight three six Hawthorne Way, the, the next door, um, to this project.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, first, uh, first of all, good evening for the, um, Chair and the Commissioner. Yeah, it's take late, um, for this hearing. I really appreciate your time, and, um, I have, um, because I have a question for this one, once the, um, sending out the, uh, the map. I feel like, um, based on my research, all the labor lots, it's like, um, you know, almost like on this street, everybody have only the one style of home, this is a Mills Estate Ratchhome. And then, uh, even the newly built, um, houses around like, um, around the corner, uh, um, you know, or nearby, uh, street, everybody just keeps the same style. So I guess this labor who just prefer, um, everybody staying, uh, the Mills Estate Ratchhome style. So, so I definitely opposed this project because this project bring a, just like a very modern-looking, um, house uh, on the street, and then you can look at the, if you visit the street, you can find out the, the road condition is not really good. Probably because, um, everybody driving to and from the Mills High School. So, so it's that modern-style house, it's kind of like out of the, out of the way, like, um, in the, in the nearby street, quite a few street. You, you didn't find any kind of modern-looking house like that. So I just worry about, um, if somebody builds this, um, modern, very modern-looking house, and then will, you attract, uh, of course, attract a lot of attention, and then I guess, um, people feel uncomfortable and then they move away, and then there are new construction coming. I think this, um, it's not good for the neighborhood, because the neighborhood is near the, um, one of the elementary school and one of the high school, Mills High and Spring Valley. So I guess all the construction coming on, like roll into the, the slow ball, I, I, actually, it's not good for people, you know, when, after this COVID nineteen finish. So, you know, when, when kids can go back to school, there, there'll be traffic jam, all kinds of, uh, um, dust and the noise. And then the second, it's like, um, based on my research, all the lot around here who have a five-bedroom and three and a half five baths, it's like much bigger. So, yeah, so this lot is, it's only about eighty-four hundred square feet, and other one, it's like, um, you know, when they have a five-bedroom, they are much, much bigger. It's like ten K square feet or nine thousand something. So I've, I, 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 I believe this, this one is one, one to build a five-bedroom and four-bathroom. It's like too crowded. And now mentioning about privacy, like they, of course, didn't, did not violate the, uh, you know, five feet to the Sinai, but of course, but people will hear each other, you know, like during your dinnertime, during your exercise time. And then especially during this COVID nineteen time, like, like, you know, we have COVID nineteen, and then we have a wildfire. And then now this construction coming, I think that it's, it's not fair to the kids who, who, who seen my property, because it's My property because it's kind of like limit their outdoor time, you know, like, so when can they go outside for a little break? Uh, during the day while they're doing the distant learning. You know, when we have this covid nineteen and people want to build, build this house too close to us. So I just want to um. Petition to um, the, all the Chair and the Commissioner and rethink about this project. Um, yeah, um.
Your, your time.
Yeah, it's up.
Time limit.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. Yeah, so if you want to ask more question like information, which address I'm talking about, I, I'll give you, yeah, if you ask. I have all the addresses, like the newly built house. Yeah, go out of the, this kind of.
Thank, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, to Audrey, um, those are all the comments. Would you like to address those comments, please, your referral?
I'm sure. Uh, definitely, I respect the neighbors' comments and um, concern about. Construction, um, dust in the air that, um, of course unfortunately for any neighborhood and enjoying. Where, where there are homes being improved, you must endure that for some time. My own neighbor has been building a house, brand new house for the last five years. Um, and so we certainly couldn't wait, can't wait for them to finish up their home. Certainly that's not the expectation with this project. Uh, my client is actually very anxious to get started with construction so that their family can move in and go to the nearby um, elementary school. Um, the, in terms of advocating for the more contemporary style that is um, a style that my client desired. We originally did not intend to tear down the house. Um, in fact, tried to work with the existing. Um, parameters of the house, um, and the shape of the house. Uh, there were just, uh, the size setbacks were um. Much wider or they're currently much wider than is allowable and um, it was um, we were pretty quick to see that. There were some areas of the property that uh, can be expanded into to um, allow. My client to have a larger home on one story with their kids um, and meet all the planning um, guidelines. So um, and then in, in working with originally, initially with um, Sam Fielding, um. Uh, it was um, basically shared with us that the house was going to be considered a tear down, whether we wanted to or not. Um, so, and that's why the application is described as such, that is a um, full demolition new home. When our intention was to try to keep the existing foundation and work with it. Um, in terms of the um, style, so your contemporary style is um, it's a growing trend um, of this time. Um, I respect that the neighborhood was built, you know, in the um, kind of a mid-century time period and um, and a lot of the homes are aging. And including my client's home. And um, we went deliberately for a low-profile contemporary home without. Lots of, you know, we're not trying to scream, um, look at me or anything like that. It's um, it's fairly understated. Well, a stucco home with um, some wood decorative paneling. To just kind of enhance some of the architectural elements around the house of the windows um, and around the garage door area. And the clear story windows up above are really just intended to bring in some natural light. Certainly nobody can stand up that high to even um, look out those windows. So they're not intended to block. Um, anybody's um, view or anything like that, but rather to allow light infiltration during the day. Uh, into that central core of the house. So um. Anyway, I um, strongly support, of course, the um, this contemporary style. There are homes in the neighborhood with that style. In fact, there's one. Just a couple of blocks away that um, was very well received when it was built and sold. Um, immediately on the market. It was um, investment property that um, that, not my property, but one that um. I know the realtor who had actually was involved with that project. And um, we're just seeing more and more throughout the Bay Area, an inclination towards a more contemporary, clean line. Styling with the, to allow the California indoor/outdoor living. And that's what my client desired.
Thank you very much. Hearing or seeing no more speakers, um. I would love, like to close.
I am not seeing any more hands up.
Thank you. So uh, we will move on to discussion. Any discussion from the planning commissioners?
I have another uh, kind of late clarification for Steph.
You know, you're gonna have to do better next time. You're gonna have to do it at the right time.
Sorry about that. Uh, the uh. The design report on page three, it has again the table for the um. Uh, requirement and then in notes. And the maximum lot coverage, it says the proposed, uh, proposed lot coverage is twenty-two eleven square feet. Uh, I'm suggesting revisiting that is, is that, should that be corrected to thirty-eight eighty-one square feet?
Uh, you're correct there, yeah.
Okay, so.
It should be, it should be, it should be thirty-eight eighty-one, yeah.
Okay, so lot coverage is forty-six percent and it meets the maximum coverage. No more than forty-two hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Chair Quig?
Is there any other questions or Anders want to speak?
Yes, please, Chair. Thank you. Um, this uh, for the architect, uh, is it Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, how, how should I say your last name? I'm sorry. Say, okay, all right, so uh, I'm. Thank you for being here today. The house looks beautiful, by the way.
You.
Um, and uh, you know, this is not the first time I've seen a contemporary with that style in that neighborhood. Um, in fact, this is probably the second one that I have seen. Um. Beautifully done. Um. But if it would just would go to uh, page A four dot one. Looking at the elevations.
Sure.
You have an overhang projecting out three foot from the side wall.
Yes.
And I think your property line is only five feet away from your side wall.
Yes.
So similar to the previous project a little bit, I think you might have to cut down on your overhang a little bit by a foot.
Sure.
But uh, I think it will still look beautiful even after you trimmed this back to meet planning criteria.
Yes, no, no problem. I, I don't think it got picked up, I guess, during the plan check process, but I were happy to accommodate that. The, the, the deeper eaves was really to just provide some shade um, at the glazed areas and so um. But I think that twenty-four inches would also work.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll look beautiful. Um, and uh, you have it listed as a dual-pane aluminum windows. So they're all going to be brand-new aluminum windows?
Yes.
Okay, title twenty-four works out, okay?
Yes.
Good. Good, good. And uh, the rear patio door, are they all eight foot tall or are they seven foot tall?
They are, let's see, that is um.
The plate height is eight foot six.
Yes, so it's, I think it's eight foot tall, it's intended to be eight feet tall.
Okay, it's just so, it's just the front uh, elevation. Where you have the plate height to be eight foot six, finish to finish?
Yes, and that's where the, the entry door is intended to be full height, um, eight foot six.
Right, and then that's why your front door is uh, it's an eight foot tall front door.
Uh, eight foot six, yeah, it's gonna clear between the, you know, it may not be exactly eight foot six, but between the threshold and the underside of the ceiling there. In the eve.
Okay, so it's a hundred and two inches tall, roughly?
Yeah, in general, yeah, roughly. It's gonna be a pivot door?
How wide is it? Four feet?
Uh, forty-eight.
So four feet?
Yes.
Beautiful. Uh, and then the garage door, what is that gonna look like? Aluminum?
Yes, it's black aluminum or, you know, dark anodized bronze aluminum with um, obscure glass glazed panels.
Okay, um, so it's a sort of a black and white color scheme?
Um, yeah, actually, next, I was just gonna ask if Nestor, do you have the material board that you could um. Show, um, I don't know if I have that prepared for this meeting.
Um, it. It, it, it was part of the uh, packet. It was one of the attachments, but I, I can pull it up here as well, yeah.
Here it is. Can anybody see it?
You know, that helps.
It's in our.
Well, we want a colored rendering as part of the application, um, Mr. Fang.
Yeah, I don't think I got the color board. I got the rendering on your, on your, on your um. Eleven by seventeen plan, but I don't think I have the, oh, wait, is it?
Should have been this one that's up there now. Should have been, I, I think it was the last attach, attachment on the, on the, uh, packet.
Oh, okay, sorry. I overlooked that, my bad, okay. Good, looks good. Um, garage, cedar siding, okay, clear finish on the cedar?
Yes.
And the stucco, smooth?
Um, stucco smooth and then the color is there on that material board. Um, just a neutral soft warm gray.
Cooling wood, is the name of the color?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let me uh, interrupt in this uh, this, that part discussion. I'll uh. Return Anders' favor for interrupting. Uh, this, this design here, uh, thank you. This design here, again, you know, there are neighborhood concerns. We did raise that, that. Uh, how is this house in keeping with the neighborhood? It really is a unique and different. Very modern, very contemporary. And the neighbors do have valid point that it is uh. You know, really different style. Uh, is there any ways like uh, slightly modifying color tones or adding other, other elements? That might bring it more kind of in keeping with the neighborhood so that it doesn't just. Stick out as more of like temporary industrial style grays and metal. But maybe add some more earth tone or something that might at least. Help it to blend in just slightly with the neighborhood. Is there something? Uh, that uh, architect might suggest?
Well, I, you know, Commissioner Wong, I think in, in a house such as this, in this type of design. Um, obviously, first of all, uh, in keeping with the neighborhood characteristic, um, you know, we have to take that into context. This, like, like I said a little earlier at the beginning of my comment, this is not the first one that looks like this. This is in fact, I think, you know, if I'm not mistaken, the second or the third one that looks like this. And um, so there is definitely precedence within that neighborhood. To have a house that is in a similar setting uh, with the triple roof. Um, three-tier roofing system looking. Um, scenario. So, and as far as the color scheme goes, you know, with the black and white, um, and. The cedar and the clear finish, it's very much in. Keeping with the contemporary design methodology. I mean, we obviously living in the modern times. Uh, in the past, back in the fifties, you know, that was the baby boomer time when. Everybody was building ranches, um, one-story ranches. And that was the time that, you know, in the history where ranches were built. And back in the nineteen hundreds, that's when Victorians were built. And so therefore, at different times, we see different types of architecture. And would have in a modern time. So seeing an, an architecture that is more closer to. Um, a modern architectural design is, you know, it's quite normal. And um, personally, I think design is beautifully done. Um, I don't think it could be done any better.
So for Audrey though, you know, I think even directly across the street, there's more of a Mediterranean-style house with a fountain in front. And when you look from one side of the street to the other side of the street, it might be like, whoa, this is such a. Contrast and styles. Is there any thought or uh, anything you can do to help ease that uh? Contrast?
Um, so uh, it, I, I mean, I can certainly talk to my client. Uh, we were intentionally trying to stay with a neutral palette. Now I realize with that material board that the uh, dark anodized bronze aluminum sample is the predominant, the largest sample on the board. But it's actually the most minimal um, um, visible finish that you'll see around the house. You mostly will see this kind of warm beige-y gray color stucco. Um, and then the natural color of glass and the warm wood. So we were intentionally trying to stay neutral. We didn't want to, we, you know, certainly could have painted the house turquoise and we didn't. Um, when you drive around the neighborhood in Millbrae, there are all kinds of colors of homes and um. And the, the neighborhood is not predominantly Mediterranean-style or that would be a different, you know, we would come up with a different approach. Uh, we quite like that there is a varied style in the neighborhood and there isn't one predominant color um, running through um, the street. And so felt that this could fit in nicely with a, a hybrid of different types of homes. So. But we can certainly take a look at color. I didn't know that um, color was um. Um, something that the planning commission um, spoke about um, or decided on, but I can, we can take a look at. Warming up the tones of the color. Um, it actually looks really nice, uh, that color, if you can see the actual sample. Um, and then the wood, like I said, it's very warm. It's definitely not intended to look industrial. The house is really to look inviting and warm and. Um, and open and, and bright. So um, that's our intention. Uh, we, where we were considering possibly going to, instead of, instead of the dark anodized bronze aluminum. Metal finish, but going with the clear anodized uh, finish, uh, which would be the more silver tone. Um, look, but in the end, um, my client decided to go um, in this direction from a maintenance and uh, cleaning the home kind of perspective. Seemed like it would be easier than maintaining the, the, the brighter uh, white metal finish.
I can appreciate that response. It is not completely all metal. There is kind of the earthy whites in there with the wood paneling and the. Nice landscaping that brings in more of a, uh, less industrial look. I have one other co- comment clarification for you. In the rendering, it shows the driveway, there's fairly big open driveway, but on the. Uh, next. Page of the design package, where it lists the plots, lot, lot, layouts.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Are you asking me a question?
Yes, I'm drawing A one point two.
Yes.
It shows a driveway that has a big, bigger landscaped area to the left of the driveway. Versus in the rendering, it shows. Open driveway. So I just want to have assurances.
Yes, um.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
For some reason or other, there's times that you speak, you must be moving away. And it's very difficult to hear you. I think that. The architect is having the same issues. So um. Is, your voice comes through very, very clear for parts of it and then all of a sudden, I, I don't know if you turned, but we kind of lose it. So. I'm not quite sure what that is, but.
I, I think I understood the question, um, Commissioner Wong. Um, I think it was more the artistic um, license of the renderer. The intention is to have the landscaping on the left side of the driveway. Uh, per the site plan.
Commissioner, uh, Chair Quig, through the chair. I'm sorry, we had uh, somebody else raised their hand for public comment. If you'd like to take that or not.
Someone raised their hand.
Yeah, the public comment.
Is somebody new?
Yes.
Um.
Did we close public comments?
Well, we did.
Okay. That's up to you to reopen or, or other, or not.
Me, but. I'm gonna, everything is so out of whack with this type of. Media that we're working with, yes. A two-minute. Is fine.
Go ahead and let them in?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm. Nancy, can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Nancy Montez. I'm sorry for coming in late, but I was able to get in earlier. My, I live at eight thirty-two Hawthorne, or excuse me, eight twenty-eight Hawthorne. Which is the house just to the east of the residence. So we share fences. Um, we don't have any problem at all with the design of the home, with the exception of the height of the master bedroom. Our, their property, our property is within five and a half feet of the fence line and theirs will be within five feet. Um, we have solar panels on our roof, but more importantly. Um, their property is already two feet higher than ours in their backyard. We have a swimming pool with the height of their master bedroom that they're proposing. They will be considerably over the fence. um, looking into our area and also blocking any other solar panels that we have put onto our roof. So that is a concern. Um, the height of the bedrooms in the front is not a concern at all, but definitely the, it, the, um, the raised height of the back bedroom or master bedroom is a concern for us. Um, other than that, everything else is fine with our, our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking my late, um, comments also.
Well, we wouldn't normally, but because we are on, on video and all kinds of crazy things, uh, I, I thought it would be the right thing to do, so thank you very much. That being said, um.
Can respond to that?
Yes, please.
Um, Nancy, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, calling you by your first name. Um, this is Audrey Se speaking and, um, so, um, I don't know if you heard at the beginning of this discussion that we're going to trim back the, um, the eve overhang by, uh, twelve inches. Um, so be, um, twenty-four inch overhang instead of the thirty-six inch overhang, which, um, may help with your concerns there. Uh, but also I wanted to point out that there are only, um, looking towards, I believe you said your pool, your swimming pool, your backyard area. There are just two private, um, bedroom windows in the master that are, um, on that right elevation and the plate height is eight feet tall for those, um, windows. And, um, so in terms of a vision, and we've actually deliberately kept the, the height of the floor of the home low, um, again, going with the low profile of the house. And so, um, one's view, if we assume a six or seven-foot fence on the side of the property, um, I would believe most of the window is actually covered by the fence. Um, so I don't think you should expect anybody to be looking out, um, in that direction, um, towards your pool or have any visibility towards your pool.
I would be concerned about what you're saying because we already have a two-foot difference there. So when you're saying that their windows are within the area, you have to be talking about two feet higher than that also.
Um, the windows that are there at the house now, is that what you're saying?
No, the windows, when you're proposing the windows, I mean, we already have an eight-foot fence that's been constructed between the prior, that, between the prior, um.
So, excuse me here, sorry, Chair Quigg, to the chair, sorry. Uh, I don't think this is supposed to be a discussion amount, the, uh, public speaker as well as the architect.
Yes. But, uh, the architect wanted to respond, so I.
The architect should be able to respond, but I think, you know, public comment, once it's done, it's done.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Audrey, um, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, I, I think you said C.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that, uh, the speaker came in a little late and we did allow her, um, some of the comments she made, um, perhaps you can talk with staff and go over the numbers again. The fact that you are, um, reducing the overhang, that I don't believe that's what her question is. Um, but maybe because, uh, years ago, we always had, um, drawings on how the windows on the applicant's side matched up with the view on the other side. And we don't seem to get that type of view anymore. So I would really, um, expect that you do what you possibly can, uh, to, uh, eliminate any disturbance. I know you're going to be a lot closer, uh, as the gentleman said on the other side, uh, because you're expanding the, the footprint. But, um, uh, how high is the bedroom?
Through, through the chair.
Yes.
If I may, um, I just wanted to note that this is a one-story house.
Right.
There are no, there are no loft spaces or, um, attic spaces in which, um, uh, there, uh, someone could be, um, you know, I suppose if you're on a ladder, there, there's a possibility, but, but, um, the house is designed as a single story. Um, the roofs are, are, are flat roofs and, um, you know, staff's evaluation, given that, um, it is, the, the, that's height of the master bedroom, it'd be a little bit tall. Um, it doesn't necessarily translate to, um, a privacy impact.
Well, I would appreciate, how, how high is the back bedroom?
Uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Quigg, when you say how high is the?
Yeah, what is the height of the?
When you say the height, you mean the ceiling height or you mean, you know, what?
Yeah.
Well, so I think the ceiling, the plate height, it's about ten foot six inches. Although, you know, whether the ten foot six inch plate height or is it twenty foot plate height, the person would only still be no more than standing, you know, on, on a one foot, one inches platform. The person isn't going to be higher. The eye level isn't going to grow just because the ceiling height grow. So, you know, what, whatever privacy issue that exists today, as a one-story house, would still be the same after the new construction is completed. Like, this is what I'm trying to get at.
I think what was concerning to the neighbor is that the master bedroom does go out further, isn't it, than what is there now? It extended. So, in all due respect, they're not used to have anything there because you're moving it backwards. You're moving it behind, so I understand that they're saying the same one story, but that's a totally new piece, if I'm not mistaken.
It is one piece, it is the same height. Oh, in fact, the house is shorter than it used to be. But I think when we look at privacy, in the con- in the context of privacy, historically, we've been looking at one-story house that, you know, no matter, no matter how tall the ceiling height is, the plate height, in this case, as referred to, um, you're not likely to look over, look over the fence anyway. Because the fence, you know, by in itself, it's already, say, for example, six foot tall. You're standing inside your house, looking at the fence, you're not going to look through the fence and see someone else's pool. Nor the one-story, um, height roof is going to cast a shadow on a different house next door, uh, including solar panel. So I, I think, you know, when we look at these things, we have to look at it in a historical context and how we view these things, right? A single-story home, you know, even as far back as you, I mean, and then besides, there is, there's minimal elevation difference between the two properties. I don't remember if there's a survey there.
Yeah, through the chair, if, if I may, um, one, one more thing out. Um, so at the master bedroom, um, as you can see on the elevations, the proposed right-side elevations and the proposed rear elevation on a, a four-point-one, the actual window at the master bedroom, um, the plate height may be, uh, at about ten-six, uh, but the window, the, the window height is actually a lot less, it's less than eight feet. Um, so it's not, uh, it's not going to be unusually high at that location. Um, it is actually quite narrow.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak? There being none, um.
At this time, there are no hands raised, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, I don't, there it is right there. So, um, do I hear motion? No other conversation? Maureen Davis.
Um, I actually want to say, echoing a lot much of what Andrew said, this is a beautiful design. It'll make a nice addition to the neighborhood. It meets all of our planning standards. Yeah, it might get closer to fence lines, but it's all within the standards, there's no exceptions being asked for here. Um, I can't wait to, uh, vote on this project.
So we have a first, do we have a second? Andrews, are you?
Um, Commissioner Davis, did you make a motion?
I, I didn't, I was going to see if anybody else wanted to speak, she hasn't said anything, so, but I'm going to do it at some point.
Chair Quigg, if I may. I'll make a motion to approve a thirty-two Hawthorne way as a design review permit to allow for the demolition of an existing single-story residence and construction of a new single-story, single-family residence in a single-family residential, our one zoning district, with the exception that the overhead be cut back by twelve inches on both sides on the new building.
And I'll second that and I agree with, uh, I think the contemporary style, you know, we, we have that flexibility and I think it looks good. It'll be definitely more functional with the garage toward the front, attached garage, so I think it'll be good, so second.
So we have a first and a second, and can we have the, uh, oral vote, please?
Uh, Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Fung?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong? Was that a yes? I'm sorry, please repeat. Commissioner Wong? Commissioner Wong? Can you repeat your vote, please?
My back?
Commissioner Wong? Can you repeat your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, that's five to zero for a pass.
Thank you very much.
There's a ten-day appeal process, um, so you, you have to wait for these ten days for the appeal process.
Thank you very much, commissioners, have a good evening.
Congratulations.
I think it's going to be really nice too, it's, it's really.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Millbrae accessory dwelling units zoning ordinance amendment. I gotta say, somebody's done a lot of work on all of this, so. Yeah, this is, okay. If we can have the, um.
Are you able to see the, uh, first, uh, slide?
Yes, I can. Can everybody see it?
Great, uh, good evening commissioners, uh, Chair Quigg, planning commissioners, and members of the public. Uh, again, this is Sam Fielding here, senior planning community development department, presenting the accessory dwelling ordinance this evening for your consideration to recommend for adoption for the city council. In addition, uh, the city attorney Catherine Sue and planning manager Ross Gomata are present and available to answer questions on this item. So outline the presentation, uh, I'm going to go through with the objective, a little bit on the background of the ADU ordinance, the minor revisions to the ADU ordinance, a summary of the ADU ordinance revisions and explanation, and the recommendation for approval. So, the main objective here is to, uh, adopt the, uh, City of Millbrae municipal code to, uh, ADU ordinance to be compliant with state law provisions regarding ADUs and your accessory dwelling units, according to the government code sections. A little bit on the background of the ADU ordinance, Millbrae's ADU ordinance. Uh, back in twenty sixteen, the California State passed ADU laws and regulations uh, authorizing, uh, allowing accessory dwelling units in California. Then the planning commission, uh, had an ADU ordinance study session that was held on August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. There were three neighborhood community workshops held in Millbrae on August twenty-seventh, September seventh, and September twenty-nineteen. We also had a city, uh, council study session on the ADU ordinance. And on January first, twenty twenty, the state updated and revised the ADU laws and regulations. Uh, so at that point, uh, the planning commission voted, uh, five oh at the June fifteenth, twenty twenty planning commission hearing, uh, to recommend the city council adopt the ADU ordinance with some certain modifications. Uh, staff completed that and then, uh, provided the, uh, proposed ADU ordinance to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for review, uh, as is required, uh, for cities that are adopting an ADU ordinance. On August twentieth, the city attorney and staff reviewed the revisions and agreed with the changes to provide clarity, consistency with the California state law. And, uh, Sept- September twenty twenty, uh, we're br- bringing back the ADU ordinance, uh, to the planning commission, uh, for a recommendation to the city council to adopt the ADU ordinance with, with minor revisions. Again, this is, uh, some information about the, the minor revisions to the ADU ordinance amendment, uh, the planning commission hearing. Basically what I just stated, uh, the, again, the, the revisions that, uh, and the suggestions that were recommended from the California Department of Housing and Community Development focused mainly on providing, uh, clarity on the ordinance and more consistency with, with the California state law. Um, in your staff report, there's, uh, the attachment one, which shows the ADU ordinance red lines, the minor corrections. And then on attachment two, uh, the ADU ordinance definitions, red lines were provided. And attachment five provides a summary and explanation of the minor revisions to the ADU ordinance. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the report and minor revisions to the ADU ordinance and recommends approval for the final adoption by the city council. I'm available to answer questions and we also have our city attorney Catherine Sue and, uh, and, and, uh, Mr. Mata to, uh, answer questions or, um, provide any clarification on the revisions.
Thank you very much. Does someone want to, who would like to start the discussion? I think everyone's done a really good job on it. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
So I guess just to get started with the discussion is that, um, these, uh, proposed revisions, were they deemed necessary to comply with existing laws? Or is it just improvements or was it essential criteria that, that the language needed to be changed in order to meet?
It was to, uh, be consistent, uh, with state law. There, there are a few minor, minor clarifications, um, here and there, but, uh, ninety-eight percent was it to, to be consistent with the, um, state statute.
It appears that, uh, in my opinion, a lot of the changes that were made make it less specific and that it leaves a lot more interpretation to an ADU, uh, and some of the requirements that we put in there, uh, were taken out. I think, uh, whatever requirements that are allowed to be provided to have some control over ADU. I know that we want to encourage people to have, uh, more housing and, uh, don't want to restrict people from having an ADU. Um, but what we, what I'm thinking is that we've made those comments so that we want to have assurances that the ADUs are designed and constructed uh, correctly, that there's no, for example, uh, pre-existing unit that just, someone just converts to an ADU without having meeting proper, uh, code and occupancy requirements for their safety and so forth. So I think a lot of our comments that we had before, we're really looking at, uh, sharpening up the ADU requirements for Millbrae so that we don't have any, uh, substantial living conditions, that someone just converts an existing, uh, shack or, or shed into a living unit. Uh, so I think of whatever comments that we had, it seems like they were taken out to just make it more general and more, have more leeway for occupants or homeowners to build ADUs, which I kind of think was, uh, unfortunate, I think we should have a little bit of. unfortunate. I think we should have a little bit of stricter provisions and just insert language, like it has to meet UBC codes or building occupancy requirements and safety measures just to ensure safety of residences and, you know, there's all types of dwelling units that in a highly dense urban area like San Francisco and Oakland that haven't gone so well with the occupants, like the Ghost Ship fire, at worst case, in Oakland. So I thought that our language would have been good, and we had a really good discussion to make sure that those types of occupancies and hazards don't exist in our city.
Through the chair, through the chair, I'd like to sort of respond from staff's perspective. We did hear planning commission's comments from the last, from the last meeting, and we have kept that those concerns included in the, in the ordinance and in attachment two, in the definitions. So in the definitions, when we talk about an accessory dwelling unit, the junior accessory dwelling unit, and define it there, we, we made sure that, you know, the, the standards, what, what needs to be included as far as the kitchenette, the bathroom, the counter preparation location, that that's included in the definitions. And we also heard you loud and clear as far as looking at the architectural design, and that is still included in the ordinance for detached ADUs. It's limited to one story, sixteen feet in height. But we do have an architectural design component to make sure that it's compatible with the design of the existing home. It was removed in the junior accessory dwelling unit section because a junior is going to be located within an existing home. So that, in the previous iteration of the ordinance, that architectural compatibility was also included with the junior ADU. That was confusing because it doesn't really apply to the junior, this applies to a detached ADU. So most of the ordinance, the minor revisions, is to, was to provide clarity, simplify the language while still making it in compliance with California state law, but also including Millbrae's concerns about architectural compatibility and making sure that when we define the the junior ADU and the ADU, making sure that it meets building, fire, and safety code requirements and does include all the necessary components for it to be an accessory dwelling unit.
If I could add to that, if I could ask some clarification on what specific requirements were taken out. Staff believes that this proposed changes here don't actually make any material changes to the ordinance and quite, in fact, clarifies and strengthens the ordinance. So if you could maybe point to specific sections which that you're referring to, that would be, if we could
In the meantime
provide an explanation.
In the meantime, while he's looking, Commissioner Davis has something to say.
We skipped over public comment. We didn't see if there was anybody who wanted to speak before we started our discussion. I don't know that there is, but we skipped it.
You know, because, because
We don't have people sitting in front of us, it's hard.
Because, because we have no specific project in front of us.
Um, just to make note, there are no public, no hands risen for public comment. We have this time. All right.
I want the home. That's fine.
That's good to know.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Mr. Wong?
And I would trust the staff's judgment to make these revisions and ensure, you know, that the language in this ordinance addresses safety concerns and make sure that the proper building codes are incorporated. But just as an example, in ten point oh five dot three development standards, it's crossed off, if the work involves an accessory dwelling unit or junior, J-ADU, fire sprinkler requirements shall be determined by building code and fire department regulation, so that was like crossed off, so I'm, and if that's a general statement that, you know, gets across to developers and homeowners, that if you want to build it, make sure you meet, you know, safety standards and fire codes, you know, it may be redundant, but it's a clause in there, provision in there, just to remind them that, you know, emphasis, meet code, you meet safety.
Sure, and that, that's, the comments were well received. Definitely appreciate your concern with regards to that, and regards to the specific text that was stricken out, this was specifically recommended by HCD, Housing and Community Development, and that the, the following sentence, in no event will accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling unit be required to provide fire sprinklers, if fire sprinklers are primary dwelling, that, that specific language was taken from the state statute. And it really essentially says the same thing, just in different ways, and they recommended that this text be included to enhance the consistency with the state statute, but they recognized that, you know, it's not pervert-batum, but they had recommended that we make that change.
So I just suggest instead of going through every single comment or line item, just to keep that in mind, to just try to achieve what we were trying to achieve with some of those, those language like that, and even if it's redundant, you know, everyone has their own perspective, so, you know, housing advocates, you know, I'm sure that they want to encourage people to make it as easy as possible for them, people to develop ADUs. And that's fine, we want to encourage people to have ADUs, but make sure it's done right.
Commissioner Davis?
Just to reiterate, all of these ADUs will have to go through the process. All of our codes will be applied. There'll be inspections. All of the safety rules are still applied. There's, there's no, no skipping it, right, staff?
That's, that's correct. ADUs require a building permit, and so it will be reviewed for consistency with building and fire codes.
Any other comment, but it's from the commissioners?
I had a couple of questions on the, some of the changes, just to, because I was curious about it, so. The, so junior ADUs, previous, so now it's been taken out that it's only for single-family residents, I'm sorry, single-family and multifamily residents, so. So that's just changes that to be consistent with the state law, so that it's not allowed in the commercial and DIA areas, is that what?
That's correct. Junior accessory dwelling units are only permitted with single-family homes, not apartments.
Okay. Okay, and then in terms of the parking, so if anybody, I guess this is a state thing as well, so if somebody converts either their garage either into a junior accessory dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit, they are not required to replace that parking, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so I'm seeing that there is a possibility of somebody actually taking a single-family home, converting their garage into a junior ADU, adding on an ADU, not having any garage at all, is, right? And we have no control over that, is that, is that the correct understanding? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Unfortunately, that is the reality of the state law.
Okay, yeah, I just kind of wanted to put that out there for the record, because I think it's, there are some places, some areas of our, of Millbrae where that is really not a great idea. It's good that we do have in here that you're not allowed to do a short-term rental for these, so these cannot be, whether it's a junior ADU or regular ADU, it cannot be used as a short-term rental in Airbnb situations, so I think that's important to note. But at the same time, I'm, I'm very concerned about this, but I know, I guess our hands are tied, but I'm very concerned about that aspect of it.
Well, let's not let that go too easy. What can we do to, I mean, otherwise, you can have, you know, like these designs reviews that we just had.
It's not a matter, I mean, if, I mean
Why being for staff, why?
I mean, it's not letting go easy or not, I think it's a state, yeah.
So Jean, Jean, are you finished?
I mean, no, not really, I mean, that was my, that was my, I just wanted to assert that because that is a state thing, and if there is no other recourse, then there is no other recourse. I just think that that's not a great idea to do, and unfortunately, we're, we're there. Do you, did you want other people to talk, or do you want me to just finish what I was, I had, or?
I did.
Okay, um, in four point five, there is a in terms of owner occupancy, so the accessory dwelling units, applications received prior to January first, twenty twenty-five, so this is the top of, of the attachment one, A, attachment A, top of page five. For applications received prior to January first, twenty twenty-five, there's no requirement for a legal owner of the parcel to reside in either unit, so no owner occupancy requirement. What happens after twenty twenty-five? Is that, do we need to specify that word?
I'm sorry, where are you, Commissioner Joe?
So, attachment A, page five, at the very top, paragraph, paragraph, I guess it was five, it was four, and then it became five.
Attachment A?
Attachment A, as in apple, or attachment one. I'm sorry, you adapted, yeah, one or a, whichever page five at the very top. It's a, basically, it's saying there's no owner occupancy requirement for anything before twenty twenty-five, so I'm just wondering, what is after twenty twenty-five?
Then we could impose on occupancy requirements.
Can we put that in here, or should we put that in here?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, we could, we could make that
Or is there something with counsel?
Doesn't look like that.
Or, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the other commissioners, or if the other commissioners feel like, we should just always let it be non-occupied.
Through the chair, if I may, so just to understand your, your question, you're wondering if we could add language that says for applications received after January first, twenty twenty-five, there is or there is not a legal requirement for owner occupancy, I think that would be fine to specify that. You know, you could amend the ordinance to address that situation closer to that date. I believe this requirement is from the statute. But I, I'm not aware of a legal restriction that would prevent you from imposing a requirement after that date. I would like to double-check that, though, before we add anything.
Thank you. I mean, for me, it's always, if there's a date, I'd want to know what happens after that date, and we have so many things on our plate, or the city has, the staff have so many things on their plate, I don't want to leave it to, well, we can figure that in in five years, because five years will pass very quickly, and I mean, the laws could change as well, but so that's my thought. And then at the very bottom of that same page, it talks about junior accessory dwelling units. So for the junior ADU, it's required to have a separate entrance from the primary dwelling unit. What if that's through a garage? Is that is that a okay thing, or does it have to be from the exterior?
The junior accessory dwelling unit should have a separate entrance from the primary dwelling unit? Right, yeah, and then, and so if you're converting the garage to a junior accessory dwelling unit, you have to have a separate one. And then the following sentence says that that you can't face the same public street as a front door.
What if you have something that's above a garage, like it's a split level or something, or something, you have two level and you have nothing, and then somebody, it's above the garage, it was just kind of a space, and then now they want to convert that into a junior ADU, it's within the existing dwelling. Can it have, does it have to have an exterior entrance?
Yes.
Okay, and then that same packet, page seven. Setbacks five, bullet point two. It talks, if, it starts out with for all new attached or detached accessory dwelling units, that paragraph.
Five
Five two?
Yes.
Okay, the very last line, can you explain that, it was, the wording is a little bit weird to me, so I just had a question if you can explain that, please.
Basically, that last sentence, the added text is according to the state law, and according to HCD. The requirements for an ADU need to be need to be relaxed in order to allow a certain size ADU, so for example, you know, here, it's a, the minimum required is eight hundred square feet, and at least sixteen feet in height, with four-foot side and rear yard setbacks, so. Basically, the first sentence of that says detached accessory dwelling shall be located in the rear half of a lot. And if there is no place to place it in the rear half of the lot, say, maybe because the house is built in the rear half of the lot, in that case, only place to place the eight hundred square foot ADU is the front, then then the city is obligated to allow it in the front.
Okay, so if they can't build at least a, an eight hundred square foot, even if they're not planning to build an eight hundred square foot ADU? If they can't build one
We have to allow at least, so it could be five hundred, it could be two, it could be, but at least eight hundred. So it's essentially a minimum maximum, I guess.
Yeah, that's why it's kind of confusing, because it's like, that's the max, okay, so. But the point is that you need to have enough space in the back to have an eight hundred square foot ADU?
Right, so
Otherwise, they can build in the front.
So, yeah, so we're saying that if you want to build an ADU, you have to put it in the rear half. And let's just say, for example, that there, the rear half of the lot contains a a big boulder, and they can't place it there because they can't move the boulder, and so they say to the city, city, we can only put it, we only want a four hundred square foot ADU, and the only place we can put it is on the front, because, let's just say that they have a two-story house, and they're, they're going to go over the the height of the, the height requirement of that zoning district, and the only place you can place it is in the front. Well, then, in that case, then we have to allow that. That's the last resort, but absent any physical restriction, we can have a provision that requires it to be relocated in the rear half.
What does the eight hundred square feet, if they say they want a four hundred square feet?
I'm sorry, could you please?
So you have it as at least eight hundred square feet, but they want to build a, say, a four hundred square foot house, ADU?
Yes.
You
That's okay. Yeah, that, that's, that's fine, they can build a smaller one.
Right, right. I guess this wording is not, it's, it's really
Yeah, and this is, this is taking verbatim from the state law, so it's
Okay, so they're saying if it's not big enough in the back to build at least an eight hundred square foot, then you have the right to be able to build in the front. Okay. Okay, that's all my questions at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Fung, you have?
Yeah, I was just gonna chime in a little bit on the discussion earlier, that Commissioner Joe was saying how some of those neighborhood within Millbrae, where there might be only a single garage, and if they were to be allowed to convert that garage into an ADU, then we have no parking left in that particular property, especially in certain area where parking may actually be a premium. Right, and I think the essence of this ADU law Right? Um, and I think the essence of this ADU law. That come about is to provide affordable housing in an expeditious fashion. So that the process is quick and easy. Uh, ministerial is not meant to be difficult to do, and. We are in this situation because California has a housing crisis, not a parking crisis. And that is the fundamental reason why we are where we are on the situation, uh, and allowing these ADUs. To provide, you know, something a little bit more economical, smaller. But yet quickly be able to do and leverage some of the existing space that is not currently being used. Um, and therefore, you know. You know, some may, may not agree that, you know, parking is just as valuable, but I think, you know, at this point. California has a housing crisis, not a parking crisis. So until then, I think this is more important in terms of priority. And that's just my take on that legislation.
Um, Commissioner Davis?
I have a couple of comments, um, coming from what other people have said. I'll just start with the parking one now, since we just did that. One thing we, you could remember is, if a homeowner was to take out the garage to put in a junior ADU and dropped an ADU in the back. And, you know, so you're thinking there's more people there. This homeowner also knows that now they have no parking. It may slow them down. Adding a junior ADU and an ADU may not happen very often, is what I'm saying. So it could. But, you know, how many homeowners would want to wipe out all of their parking? Hopefully not all of them. And on the, um, question about the, the applications received prior to January twenty twenty five. I totally understand why Jean doesn't like that, just hanging there. But I, a couple of things, I, I would say, we, we don't, we don't need to do it last minute if you want to make a change, but we could see how things go for the next couple of years, maybe. And see how it's going, but also, um. We don't have rental restrictions for homeowners. They can rent out their home, and we would basically be. Taking that option away from a homeowner if they added an ADU, if they had to live somewhere on the property. So that would be a huge change to what's normal. So I would, I wouldn't want to make any of those, you know, suggestions now. I'd want to wait and see and have that go through a real process. Because that's a big change, so. Those are my two cents.
We got one more thing. Chair quit, funding.
Commissioner Fang?
Um, it's a question for staff. Now, if someone were to take out a parking and put an ADU in there, do we have any provision, according to the state law, that we require them to put in bike parking? I mean, just, just so you know, right, the logic behind this, this suggestion. Is that, just like what Commissioner Joe was saying earlier, um, some of the neighborhoods within Millbrae. Along with many different other neighborhoods in up and down the peninsula, where parking comes in a premium. Our single-family home district that is very close to the commercial district. The transit district, matter of fact, right? So, you know, what is likely to be beneficial, in this case, from a legislation, from a legislative perspective. Is that if we were to allow them to take away the automobile parking. Then perhaps we can ask them to put in bike parking, so that they can take advantage of, you know, using, um. Public transportation and bike to public transportation, um, and reduce the common footprint and be able to discourage the use of private vehicle. Or at least encourage the use of bicycle. Maybe that's a question for a city attorney, Catherine. Um, is there such a ability for us to legislate around that? Or none at all?
Um, I'm not aware of any. Any restrictions on requiring. Bike parking. I, I haven't looked into that. Um, I don't think this has come up on the staff level, so I haven't looked into this. I don't believe it's covered in the ADU statutes. Um, they're specifically dealing with automobile parking. I guess it could be. Um, imposed as a development standard or some kind of standard, um, that would be appropriate and within the city's authority. I'd have to look into it to be sure, but I, I don't think that we've considered this at all.
Um, I have, um, a follow on that. So the state statutes that generally refers to parking as parking in general, so. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't distinguish between particular parking or bike parking, so. My kind of, um, off the top of my head, kind of my initial thought is that, um, it would include any type of required parking. Um, given that the statute says that no parking may be required for, you know, so and so. You know, it, I, I think that if we were to require bike parking or, um, have some sort of provisions for bike parking, that. That would constitute, um, as being inconsistent with the state. It's just kind of my, my two cents, but we can.
Could we, could we legislate, could we legislate to be more restrictive than what the state, uh, allow us to do?
Catherine? Right, yeah, because the state says you, no parking may be required, and, um, it's a very general term, and bike, uh, parking is, is a type of parking as well. Certainly, I think that's something that we can encourage. I don't, I don't know if we can require, um, bike parking.
Commissioner Huang?
All right, so, um, just one item in here on page five. It is, uh, in the development standard. So development standard A says, um. JADUs, ADU shall comply with applicable billing code requirements, and then there was jumped down to B, and someone added C. Development standards contained in this article will be waived to the extent necessary to ministerially approve ADU and JD. In its accordance with government code. So statements like that, it, it seems to give an impression that. You know, people can design whatever they want without regard to building codes or standards, and I think, you know. All this talk about like, you know, eliminating parking or potential for eliminating parking, that's just one aspect. But so many different aspects that we always talk about during these planning commission meetings, like privacy issues or setbacks, uh, good design standards. And I think. But I think I would recommend just excluding statements like this, like C. I mean, we don't have to call out that, you know, we can waive all our design standards, or we can waive all the requirements for parking or setbacks, or. Neighborhood privacy or, or good neighborhood policies. So that kind of just sends a wrong message. I mean, ideally, someone that does an ADU or JDU, they'd be responsible. They'd want to build it according to standards and be considerate for their neighbors. And we don't want to give them any indication. I don't think we, our city would want to give any indication that, don't think that way, just. You know, we'll just waive all the codes and standards and design what you want. So, that's what I'm talking about, just if we don't have that. You know, it's not in the law that we have to have these requirements and restrictions on ADUs. That's what the law says, uh, but we still want to encourage people to have good design, thoughtful design in regards to occupant safety and. Neighborhood parking and privacy concerns and so forth. So that's the type of statement like in. Statement C that I would recommend just eliminate.
Yeah, um, this, this, that change, um, that added language was, um. A, a comment that, uh, we received from HCD, um, that, uh, you know, e- even though. We, we may have development standards, um, that, that may require. Does, um. Some sort of discretionary approval, we have to waive those in order to allow ministerial approval. So that's kind of where, where that, um, the genesis of that comment came from. Now, that being said, um, there are, um, provisions in here which. Which speak to architectural compatibility. Knowing that, you know, we can't require discretionary approval for ADUs, um, there is some sort of provision for, um. Consistency with the existing. Architectural features of the existing house.
Again, you know, HCD may have their goals and objectives, but I think we need to. You know, think about and watch out after our neighborhood and our community and stand up for what our city codes stand for, even if it's. Not ultimately required, we, we should still, you know, people who put in, in JD ADU, they should be, at least be aware of what normal design standards and what our city standards are. Before they completely disregard any standards or codes or think they can put in, you know, something else. So that's just. I would just recommend, if you want to just fight for this city and our community and our standards, and what's the purpose of having all these. Uh, requirements for parking and, and so forth, uh, if, uh, we just toss them out the window with this ADU JD. But, uh, I know that it's not, it won't be, uh. Uh, requirement because of the ADU law, uh, but at least it could be encouraged to, to withhold our city codes and building standards.
Chair, if I may add just a little bit of the legal analysis for that piece?
Yes, please.
Um, so, uh, initially, in the first draft of this ordinance, we took a more, um. I would say aggressive approach in imposing local development standards and additional requirements. And we saw some of our neighbors adopting ADU ordinances and kind of learned from their best practices, and we. Actually took the extra mile to reach out to HCD to confirm that our approach would, would be legally sound. And so this particular provision, um, that Commissioner Wong has pointed out, um, was the product of. A pretty lengthy discussion with HCD about the scope of local agencies' ability to regulate ADUs and JDUs. And, um. It relates to subdivision E one in government code section six, five, eight, five, two point two. Um, so that section basically says, notwithstanding, um. The provisions in this law that allow a local agency to regulate ADUs. Um, you must allow specific types of ADUs and JDUs, um, on certain types of lots. So, um, we kind of have two options, I think. Um, it's either have this general catch-all language that is fairly discreet. To allow for compliance with that, um, provision in the law, or, um. List out all of the, uh, instances in which we would have to permit, uh. Those statutorily permitted, I guess, uh, ADUs or JDUs. I think this approach is, um. A little bit more concise and doesn't draw the, everyone's attention to all of these exemptions that we have no ability to avoid. Um, and I do think that, uh, HCD's, um, approach could be considered, um. More conservative or supportive of housing, obviously, but I, I do feel from a legal perspective that, um, this is. An appropriate approach for the city to take, given, um, some of the legal challenges we're seeing to these ordinances and. That we've received this guidance directly from the state in writing and discussed at length with them. Um, and I appreciate your concern for imposing these local, these local standards and protecting the community, but I, I don't think there's a ton of room. To get out of, um. Of these, the, the limited scope of the, the city's jurisdiction in this realm, so. I think this is a good middle ground, and I'm happy to answer any further questions on that catch-all, because I know it's a new addition.
Yeah, we understand that, uh, we can't impose these local codes on the JDU and ADUs, but what I'm saying is, option three, just omit that. See, that statement is unnecessary, just calls attention to the wrong type of thinking. Uh, it's not necessary to include in there.
Um, I think the ordinance would be at risk of legal challenge if we admit that. And I've, I've seen letters from housing groups that will assert those claims, so. I, that's why I advise to include the language to demonstrate that we're complying with the state statute.
I think, if I may through the chair, I, I think it's fine to keep that in there, and we, you know, just to be able to keep our ordinance, um, general. One thing I want to make clear is, I don't think HCD or anybody else is saying, we just want a lot of housing and we're gonna just. It doesn't matter, the building codes don't matter, the safety doesn't matter. I think everybody wants safe, habitable housing. So they're not, the, this is not to say that we're going to just. Throw all of our building codes out the door. That's not what this is implying. It's, it's saying. If some of these standards that are in here, we need to be able to have some amount of flexibility, so that we don't get in trouble from the state. Like, that's the way that I'm, I'm taking it, so. I, I'm not really, personally, I'm not really that concerned about this, that portion of it. And, and again, this is only a portion of our building code, you know, our zoning and our building code. It's, it's a portion of it. But we're not throwing everything else out the door just because of this.
Kathy, you're muted. Kathy? You were talking, you're there.
I just, I, I agreed with Jean and, um, the attorney. I, I think. It's only guidelines and. We hope everything comes out okay.
May I?
Yes.
That line is there to protect us. It's not meant to cause harm, meant to protect the city of Millbrae, so it's an important line to include.
I, I think it's gonna be fine. Commissioner Fang?
Yeah, I think that, you know, that provision C, you know, it means certain development standards. Maybe waived by our high-level staff in order to necessitate. And comply to the state ordinance to provide a ministerial approval process. Doesn't mean throw all the things out of the window, right? It just means that our high-level staff has the ability. To maybe pick off one or two standards, so that we can still be in compliance. Right? Uh, to be able to approve these ADUs and JDUs, uh, in a ministerial process kind of way, right? It, it's not exactly a floodgate that we're letting open, but we're allowing the city to have that flexibility. To let these ADU and JDU approved, not only to be in compliance and not to be sued. But as well as being able to provide these housings, much-needed, affordable housings in a timely manner. So I think it's actually a good thing, not a bad thing.
Agreed.
Language is everything. If it was worded that way, then I would agree also, you know, with that. Uh, standards may be waived to comply with the government code section, that, and that would be fine.
Well, I mean, so if you look at this sentence, right, I mean, look at just from the law, and so if an applicant comes through the planning window and say, oh, hey. I have a JDU, I have an ADU, I want, you know, a certain standard waived, then the planning manager or the community development director has discretion. To waive it to the extent that is absolutely necessary in order to provide the ministerial approval to meet the state law. But it doesn't mean all the laws are going to be out of the window. That's, that's not what this provision means. If you just interpret it.
If it's like breaking electrical wiring code or fire code, then they'll be like.
No, 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 no. So, yeah, exactly. So this is about development standard, not about health and safety, you know, type building code. This is a matter of development standard, right? Like, you know, certain amount of setback, you know, whether or not a certain window is facing, you know, a neighbor's pool, for example, that sort of things, right? So, um, so, but this provision still leave our staff plenty of discretion. To make sure, to the extent possible, that we maintain our development standard. And still be able to meet the ministerial approval that the state mandate us to do. Is that right, Catherine?
I.
Counselor, counselor, I mean, I mean.
The other one, the one that really knows what they're doing, right?
Nice.
Beautiful name, I just love.
That's correct. Uh, I, the way that it's drafted, it, it basically says that. The city will waive development standards to the extent necessary to comply with state law. Uh, this is not about, um, safety building code type standards. These are about the development standards contained in this ordinance.
Although, counselor, um, if I may, just slight suggestion, the development standards, the language there, the development standard contained in this article will be waived. Versus maybe waived. Which gives us the extra level of flexibility, if you will, counselor. You think that's something that might be beneficial for us to tweak a little bit on the wording?
Um, I would.
See, see, maybe waived, maybe waived will give us the, the, the option to do so at our discretion, at the staff level. Will be waived sounds more like we are obligated to waive it.
Well, the city would be obligated to waive it to the extent necessary to. Well, the city would be obligated to waive it to the extent necessary to comply with state law. So that's why I I we have used the word will, and I understand that um. Yeah, I I suppose if we use the word may, um it would provide more discretion, but. The the purpose of this language is to indicate that we will comply with state law if it's implicated. So I I think the way it is drafted. Is, it's intentional, yeah, I I I think. Will is is um appropriate, um but it is, they will only be waived to the extent necessary to comply with state law. Um so that analysis would have to be done on the state, on the staff level, they would look at. The state laws that are implicated with a particular project and determine if any of the development standards would need to be waived.
I would tend to think that um our attorneys have looked at this to benefit us. So we appreciate what you're doing. Your attorneys, you know verbiage, you you know a lot more than any one of us, so. I appreciate everything that you've done.
So for example, accessory dwelling units, part E two I says, the maximum height of an attached accessory dwelling unit shall be sixteen feet. Measured from finished grade. So if they come back and say, we want to build one thirty feet, you can't stop me, I'm going to build it thirty feet tall. And we're going to say we can waive those design standards.
It it's to the extent necessary to allow it.
Yeah.
We could say that that's not necessary to allow eight hundred square foot EDU sixteen feet tall, you can build it to sixteen feet tall.
Okay, just playing devil's advocate here.
So um are we going to need a motion on this or it's only a foundation?
We should, we should uh have a motion to either approve or deny it, right?
To recommend approval to the city council.
Right, exactly, that's how I meant it, excuse me.
Do I have a motion that we uh approve? This. As stated, um the new clean draft uh to the city council. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, I just, it's not, it's it's, I think I'm looking at what we're being asked to do is to recommend adoption by the city council, not approve it. But recommend adoption.
Uh that's what I said.
We, yeah, we recommend the council to adopt it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Is that your motion? Is that, did you make a motion, Kathy?
No.
Oh, you were just saying that's what we're going to do. Well, then I'll make the motion that we.
I was thinking you were going to.
Recommend adoption by council of this advice document.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Feng, second, and can we have um? Vote?
Commissioner Feng? Yes.
Is that a second by Commissioner Feng?
Yes.
That is correct.
And the vote is, uh Chair Quick?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Nay.
No? Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
That's a five, uh four to one vote in favor of.
Thank you all, thank you um.
Thank you, staff.
And thank you to staff, um next item is new business, do we have any new business? Roscoe?
Sorry, apologize, I was unmuted. Um no new business tonight.
No new business, any staff updates?
The only updates um is the, the, as of Jan, July one of this year. I just wanted to give an update with regards to how traffic impacts are evaluated um under the new standards, so. Commission may or may not be aware of that. Or discretionary projects, uh some of these larger ones, um such as the Anton Development. You have one at thirteen oh one Broadway, um Moxie Development. As of July one, if a secret document has not been circulated yet, um the standard of traffic impacts. Is um is shifted from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. Vehicle miles traveled is is a little bit of a um complicated term, but essentially what that means is that. If the proposed project is is located in um. Close to commercial employment centers, amenities, where you don't have to travel very far. Um those receive um more favorable metrics than a project that does not have any um. Close, uh you know, amenities, schools, um jobs and so forth, so. In general plan, the city um has different levels of services, so A, B, C, D and F, F being the most. Has the most delay. With the new rules under SEQA, uh those um. Uh level of center, level of service standards, if you're experiencing, for example, a a traffic intersection impact. Um in the level of service goes from C to D. Those are no longer um a a part of the the threshold analysis, rather, there's this complicated formula. Where if you are going to be driving from. You know, if if this development, we're we're in the middle of a rural area and you're going to have to drive far to go to childcare, you're going to have to drive far to go to. To to get to groceries, to go to, to go to um schools and like that. Those would, those would generate higher vehicle miles traveled. Than if one were to be located in, you know, in an urban area where those um are are um. Available close by, so um it's a very new um. Paradigm shift, uh when we look at uh traffic patterns and traffic impact. So you could see a a intersection that has a a long delay. For you to get to through the intersection, through that light. And we still have those standards in the general plan and they still do apply, um and we can still requires um consistency to that and. If not, uh as far as um SEQA mitigation uh measure. Uh in terms of uh compliance with uh the Environmental Quality Act, so. Those are some things that um have changed, um I believe that, uh you know. Other cities in the peninsula have um. Have the ability and have chosen to opt into their uh local evaluated local um VMT thresholds. And that's really something the city can do, um a lot of cities that have uh that experienced a lot of traffic. Traffic issues such as in San Mateo, uh they're adopting um local thresholds, um some of the smaller ones that may not have. Traffic issues, such as big concern, um there is kind of a uh technical guidance from the state. Uh that says that, you know, as long as your um vehicle mileage travel is fifteen percent below. The regional average that you're considered to be um less than a significant impact. Uh furthermore, there are also um uh exclusions and presumptions of less significant impact. Such as if the project is located within a um, within a certain distance, I believe it is a half a mile from. Public transit or um a high tr- high-quality transit corridor such as El Camino. Then um you're presumed to have less than significant impact, so in. The the eyes of SEQA, the California environmental quality act, um if the project is on El Camino. And traffic stop is within a half a mile, I believe it is half a mile. Um then uh you're screened out for further um traffic analysis. But um as I mentioned, um we still do have those level of service standards in the general plan. Um and the general plan has several policies that speak to um. Invigating some of those uh level server standards, uh but that'll have to be done through um other means. Not um through the environmental review process.
Thank you. Commission comments? Announcements?
Oh, just a comment on, or is a comment on that uh item by Roscoe or just comments in general?
Comments in general. Announcements?
I'm sorry, I didn't get to, I, it kind of passed me, um I just wanted to thank the staff for all your work on getting this ADU ordinance through, I think it's a long time coming, so. Thank you for that, um and then. Can't read my writing, sorry. I guess it would be good at some point, I would, I I'm curious as to in terms of construction, if there's been some consideration or might be worth considering. Thinking about, you know, construction hours or or something kind of adjusting a bit because people are working at home. More, um and I don't, I have no idea what it would be, but if there were, if there are some adjustments that other cities are making. You know, would it be, I don't know what it would be, because you can't tell people not to do construction during COVID, but. You know, it just seems like that would be something. Um besides that, everybody stay indoors and stay healthy, you like my background, the air this morning, so stay healthy. Stay indoors if you can.
I know, the four dogs were very confused. You're taking me out now. Okay, any other um commission comments? No announcements?
Uh yes, just to comment on that um JDU, just to, I'd just like to see, I voted no, just would like to see more encouragement for developers to. At least look at city codes and attempt to comply with them, even though they may not be a requirement. Uh the city codes are there for a purpose and would help. Our neighborhoods to be able to meet some standards for the um. Construction, right, uh COVID practices, I'm sure they'll have to have requirements for good business practices, just like real estate agents. When they show houses, they have all these requirements now for wearing masks and cleaning up, so hopefully the. Construction business will have something similar that their employees have to wear masks and. Hopefully be neighborly, you know, the neighbors can always resort to uh noise complaints if construction is too loud or working at the wrong time. Uh but hopefully everyone uh is considerate for each other, and this COVID time is really. Really problematic, and uh now we're seeing the fires, just to put things in context to the times. Air quality today was really unusual, on the weather channel, they just said it was very atypical, we're seeing. Not a blue planet, but an orange planet, uh it's like we're in the middle of the fires. I just wish everybody well that this can clear up soon and uh make sure everyone starts. Uh thinking about staying indoors, not only for the COVID, but for. Fires and air quality and now we're switching from one mask to an N ninety-five mask, uh just hope everyone's safe out there.
Thank you for your comments, um that being said, uh meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.